How did they know there was going to be a box that told you?
When it started, they ran out. Because my husband texts me and says, I just want to let you know that we're saving. He said we're talking about how. And then the ambulance, or not ambulance, but the fire department they have on site couldn't go in because they have a protocol to make sure this is staying close. They didn't make it outside. But. You know what? It was an AP.
Thank you.
I figured it was.
Oh, thank you.
Steve, I said, let's go.
Okay, I think they're going to be close. Neil, are you ready to go? Is he kicking you off?
Uh, no, I'm ready to go. I'm just taking notes on.
Okay, who's here?
Who's here, yes.
Tiffany was excused. She has to be excused. Her son is finishing up the baseball game right now. She thought she could find. Regular meeting, but maybe miss this. How is the board banquet today?
Oh, great.
What's the organization?
The A E S D.
Guitar Association of.
Elementary school principals. They might be district office and secondary secretaries too.
Mindy White got honored as the Secretary of the Year. That's very good.
Got a bill. She said, now I can retire. No, no, you can't. It's not that kind of bill.
Neil's put this together. We've seen it, most of us. I don't know if the board has, I don't think so.
A few slides, that's about it.
A few slides, so we'll go ahead and just turn the time over again and talk about what this all means that we're talking about doing.
So this is the same presentation I gave to the school community council over at Lakeview. So just a brief history about why we do truth taxation, what it means, and a little bit about our tax rates historically. And we'll have time for questions anytime you have questions. So here's the timeline of tax rates, property tax rates in Utah. And really, what we're going to focus on is six and seven. Through sixty-nine, nineteen sixty-nine through nineteen eighty-five, eighty-six with the change. You had a revenue limitation of one hundred and six of the prior year. So you had an automatic escalator. So taxing entities were automatically taking a six percent increase each year without input from the public. So we had a Senator Howard Stevenson. He didn't like that. So he introduced this law, truth taxation. Basically, it said, we have to publish before the public how much going to raise taxes and why, and allow them input. Now, the idea behind that was that they would have input each year on the budget and how much the taxes may or may not go up. Uh, that became very politically sensitive to where many entities don't do it each year because of the political nature and the amount of uh, opposition they get towards tax increases. So what he had intended to happen didn't happen. So it's now become more of a handcuff for public entities to raise revenue for their needs. So now we have inverse relation between property taxes and property values. Values go up, entities don't get additional funds or revenue unless they decide to go through a hearing. Oftentimes, they avoid that for many purposes, whether they feel like they have sufficient funds, uh, whether they don't have a project they need money for, or whether they decide that they don't want to have to go through the public input process. But at times can be somewhat contentious. Questions so far?
Ninety-six, that when you said that?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six.
So eighty-five, the rule was passed and then implemented in eighty-six. So since then, we've had this, um, this variation of truth taxation. There's been various laws that change it each year. I say each year because they had more changes this year as well. Um, but that's basically what we're operating under right now. So it's a revenue-based law. It's not based on actual rates. Rates change based on the amount of revenue we collect. So we take last year's budget revenue. Last year was about forty-four million dollars in tax year twenty-four. We're now in tax year twenty-five.
From the county.
Uh, yes, yes. No, these are, this is our revenue.
Yeah.
But we received forty-four million dollars from property taxes in tax year twenty-four. We divide that by this year's valuations published by the county assessor's office to get our tax rate. So if valuations go down, our revenue stays the same, but our tax rate goes up. But in the past ten years, we haven't seen valuations go down. You have to go back to two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Two thousand eight and nine, you had valuations going down. By ten and eleven, they were going back up. Those are two anomalies. Most often, rates are trending down because values are going up and most entities aren't collecting substantially more revenue. So if you want to change that, you have to have a hearing. You call, it's called, it's called truth taxation, otherwise known TNT. And I don't think there's any, uh, I'm not ironing in that at all, but that is what it is. Um, so we talked about how valuations and taxes have a, taxes paid have inverse relationship. In that, there are several different factors. And the two factors that we don't control at all, even having any knowledge until after the fact, is deferrals and exemption from property tax. So if you're over sixty-five and you have a certain level of income or, and also liquid assets, meaning a checking account, below a certain threshold, you don't have to pay property taxes. You get a, you get an exemption or abatement from that property tax that year. Also, deferrals. Certain groups such as veterans can defer taxes for a certain amount over a longer period of time. So not having to pay it all in November, but have twelve months to pay it. Those things affect our revenue that we actually receive. And so we calculate the property taxes owed. We take out those two items and then we get what actual revenue we receive. So, but we don't know those numbers until September, October. So when we're budgeting in, in June, we're budgeting off a best estimate, basically the best estimate. Because also in that time period, we have appeals. We have property tax appeals where a homeowner can appeal the valuation that the, um, county assessed to them. And they have to have actual data and they had to go through an appeal process. If they don't like what the county said what their appeal was, they can appeal to a property home, home improvement, who can hear both sides, consider the evidence and determine a value. And it's not based on, I think my house is worth as much. It's based on actual hard data. Um, questions so far? So really, we don't know what we're going to receive in property tax valuations probably until October, November. We'll have, the valuations will be firmed up, the appeals will be done, the abatements will be done. So we're making an estimate in June for something we don't even know have, or have a hard number until much later in the, in the year.
So can we base that a little bit on, um, past history, like the number of abatements, deferrals or whatever?
We, we can, but those can change based on, um, people moving, move out, economic conditions change. Yeah, yeah, we, we could definitely do that. Uh, but we don't know who or what will qualify. We know dollar values based on past history. That's about as far as we can get in that. And same thing with property appeals. We have no way to estimate those. Um, homeowners may or may not, um, decide to make an appeal based upon what the county assessed. They may go to their real estate friend, whom we pull valuations and say, well, the county's pretty close, or no, the county's way off, you should appeal this. We really don't have any insight to that process. Um, and we don't know what the appeals ended up being. Um, how much was appealed and what value it ended up being at? We don't have information to that or insight into that. We just know final values as a whole.
Isn't that how you rate our, like how we base what we're trying to raise it to? Like, aren't we saying we want this amount of money and then they figure out the, so why is there a question of how much we're going to get?
Well, the rates, we have caps on rates. And so the property tax rate, if we're up against the cap and they successfully will lower their appeal, the dollar values of the properties, that will raise our rate. So we can't go above a certified tax rate. But that's, and speaking in generalities, in our situation, we're not near any of our rate caps. So generally, we'll be okay. Here's, so across the statewide, this is where property tax revenues go. Most of it comes to schools. Different counties are different, but on average, fifty-eight percent goes to schools, thirteen percent goes to cities and towns, seventeen percent goes to the county, and twelve percent goes to special service districts. So we receive the bulk of it, but if any of these other entities are changing their property tax rates, it will affect the overall rate. And it gives the public impression that their taxes went up because of everyone, maybe not because of one person or one entity. So generally, we have last, we raised taxes in twenty-three, twenty-one, and I want to say eighteen. And so someone last year may say, well, taxes went up, you raised your rates. Well, not us, maybe another entity. Generally, we have kept our rates pretty flat over the past little while. So here's the process. Uh, first of all, we have the properties assessed by the county assessor. We have no role in that. They assess, uh, different rates to different, uh, different types of land. Vacant land and commercial land and secondary homes is assessed at a hundred percent of market value. And if you have a house that market value is four hundred thousand dollars, they assess it at fifty-five percent of the four hundred thousand dollars. Sorry, I'll backtrack on that. Fifty-five, those properties, so secondary, commercial and vacant land is taxed at a hundred percent of assessed value. If you're a primary residence, meaning it's someone's only home they live in, that is then taxed at fifty-five percent of valuations. Majority of the property, residential property here in our county is a primary home. There aren't very many, uh, single-family residents owned as rentals in our county.
Greenbelt, three again?
That's a very complicated factor. Depends on how it's being used, livestock, agriculture. There's a whole range of things and how much is the land used for production versus being idle. And there's six or seven categories, and it's based upon a cost per acre. So wait. And that gets even more complicated when we talk about what happens when someone sells their farmland. So there's a five back, look back period. It's called a rollback period. And they look back and assess taxes for the five years prior that they didn't pay when it's sold and converted from agricultural to commercial or residential. We used to get eighty percent of the, of that conversion. Now we get none. All passed this year. That changed that and we get none of that. It goes, eighty percent goes to the county and twenty percent goes into a state designated fund to, for farmland preservation.
I think Senator Samuel had something to do with that, didn't he?
He did. I don't think he was the genesis of it, but I think he was on the committee for it. And if we, in the southern half of the county, you drive up from the Ogden area, you notice a lot of the farmland is being converted into residential uses. So prior, we would receive some of those, but now we're not going to see any of that money as it gets conversion, converted. So real property, meaning buildings and land are assessed by the county. Essentially assessed property, that means property that goes over county lines. Uh, think of railroads. They cross all through all the counties. The state tax commission assesses those properties. And those are assessed on a calendar basis. And then we get our share of whatever properties in our county, we receive it for that. You're never going to see any, I can't say never, but I can't think of a situation where you would see a residential property that crosses county lines that would be essentially assessed. Always be assessed by the county in which it resides in. Uh, let's assume we have this personal property. So there are two kinds of personal property. There's like motor vehicle. We pay a personal property tax. It's called registration fee, but it's really a personal property tax to register our vehicles. You have, you have a commercial building, all the things that go inside the building to make it work, such as your fixtures, uh, desks, chairs, if you're, take a car dealership, for example, uh, all the, all the machinery inside the service base, those kind of things, all the inventory that's inside the parts department. Those are all assessed as personal property to that, uh, business. Well, those are the three categories of property taxes that we receive as an entity.
When, uh, probably two years ago, uh, board approved the, maybe three solar farms south, way west.
Mm-hmm.
And they claim that the actual, uh, solar panels are personal property.
They are, because they're not a permanent fixture. So when we.
We didn't get as much.
No.
Out of that type of thing as you do.
No, and personal property, the tax construction is pretty complicated. Uh, we don't get increased valuations every year. It's not reassessed every year. Kind of a one-time assessment, they collect on that till it's disposed of or they add some different.
Isn't that actually, appreciate?
They have. Be, on age base, yes, they have a depreciation schedule. So your vehicle, when you first buy it, I'm not sure what it is now, having a new vehicle in a while, but something around five hundred dollars a year to register it. And then as it gets older, it depreciates, goes down to a lower level set on certain, all the way down to seventy-five dollars, such a state rate, then the counties add some, some charge on top of that. So the other is an age-based, uh, schedule for most personal property.
It's the same as solar panels, equipment inside big buildings.
That would be a different schedule because the motor vehicle schedule is set by the legislator. So the other ones are, follow a different schedule. Questions in here? No, okay. So here's a statewide average distribution. Real property is almost ninety percent. Personal property, five percent, and essentially assessed property is six percent. So that, that's important because we realize that the majority of our income or revenue comes from personal property. Um, depending on the county you're in, I'm sorry, real property. Depending on the county you're in, it could vary greatly. Uh, Washtetla County and Summit County have a lot of second homes. There are no one's primary residents, and so they get a larger share from that than they do from commercial. Or, and same thing, in our county, we have a lot of agricultural and farmland. So we don't have the same mix of taxing, uh, almost taxing the power or revenue generating power as some other counties may have. Um, urban counties, we think of, or districts such as Ogden City or Provo District have a lot of commercial in them. And that's tech.
Local district is a lot better too.
Yes, yeah. Think about, when I say commercial, I mean like retail spaces. A lot more retail spaces than we do. And so that generates a lot more income for the district than what we have here.
Even though it's only six percent, I think they'll centrally assess like the railroad. I'm not sure if it's still called the Ruby Pipeline, but we used to get quite a chunk of money from a couple of those.
Questor Pipeline that passes over from Wyoming and goes out here.
That's what it was called, but I thought it took bankruptcy and I don't know if it's.
Somebody else bought it.
Somebody else bought it, that's.
Yeah, so Questor now, was demanding, now Enbridge owns that.
That used to be our number one tax source.
That's, that's what I thought that was all.
We were told, cause Ruby Pipeline and whatever, it's now used to be our biggest tax source.
So things like Salt Lake County has Union Pacific Depot in just north of downtown. That we have big revenues generated for them. Yes, yes. You can see how the development of the county changes the tax mix and the revenue available.
Let's, um, that's one of the things, if, if one of those big entities, those centrally assessed entities does a tax.
Appeal.
Appeal, then we could, I mean, they're districts and even, we've been hurt by that.
Yeah, several years ago, Union Pacific appealed the valuation from the state, uh, tax office.
Yeah.
And it took several, almost a year for that appeal to go through, work its way through. So there was a big question mark for, um, districts and all taxing entities, how much they do receive in the end. Cause while it's on appeal, they have the option not to pay and just pay interest on it. Or they have the option to pay and you get interest paid back to them. More, more often than not, they don't pay, they wait for it to be heard and then make the payment. So this gives a statewide picture of the, how much property valuation we have in the state. This is the most recent data because we talked about the appeal process. They go all the way through to the state, I'm a policeman, it takes a long time to get there. So we're looking at most recent year, twenty twenty-one. There's about three hundred and seventy-five billion dollars worth of property in the state of Utah. Now, tax a hundred percent, but that's the valuations. Uh, you can see the biggest chunk is real property. As our previous slide said, but that's a, a large source of income. And more often than not, the, uh, legislator, when they pass laws for economic development, is looking at this chunk of property and how they can use it to promote economic development. So the inland port that we have in our, in our county, they use the property tax valuations as a financing mechanism to attract, uh, businesses. So Lakeshore Learning, they will receive a property tax rebate for twenty years for substantial seller money. Money that would have flowed to us, but they use that as a method to entice that business to come and establish, uh, their roots here or a center here. And by doing that, it generates jobs, which the state wants, because that's income tax that comes in, that we get some of. But it also brings all development and everything else that goes along with that. So that's the preferred method of economic development is, is providing incentives for businesses to come and establish a large footprint in the state. Uh, Nucor is also expanding. They also do that through the inland port. Because they can take what we know as a CRA or increment financing and redirect that a portion out to the company as an incentive to expand. Um, other side of the freeway, we have Reader Ranch. It's not really got much movement right now for a variety of issues, mostly lack of electrical power. But that, one day, that will be a very large commercial development that we won't see, uh, much funds from because of those agreements in the port. The way it works, inland port takes say five percent of property tax differential. And then uses that for incentives or, um, they call it a public infrastructure developments or PIDs to put in sewers, roads, electrical power, whatever they need. And so that's a finance, financing mechanism. And that really impacts our revenues for basically a generation. Twenty-five years, they have, they can end it early, but I don't see why they would end it early. So for twenty-five years, we are receiving a portion of the increment. Think on Lakeshore Learning, I calculated, um, we'll receive about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from that project on an annual basis for twenty-five years. So there's a, a lot we lose through the inland port in exchange for additional development in our area. Questions on that?
One of the selling points that they used is that, if I remember the numbers right, they say, I want to say seven thousand people leave our county every day and go either south and.
Yep.
Ask to jobs and they think these, doing that will take these jobs. So therefore, they'll just help our local people without bringing more people in to bring kids. And that's always one of those concerns when you have a big business. They bring in a lot more kids and if they do get an increment financing break, then they're not helping to pay for the buildings we need to build, put them in. But I think this one hopefully will work out the way they said.
I, I don't know how it will work out, but we have a very low unemployment rate in our county. So to, they want five hundred jobs. They want, then they're, I don't know what the credit, credit share is, but assuming there's some advanced manufacturing going on there. And if we have, they're probably going to bring people in that move here, that need housing for, need roads for, they need schools for, that don't exist yet. I don't know that their methodology or the thought process will pan out well for the district. Because we only, we're not going to receive a bunch more money to facilitate the growth that comes with that. But at the governor's office, their idea is, is that we need more economic growth and we're going to incentivize it. Now, to their, to their benefit, they don't incentivize the growth in this state like other states do. Arizona spends a lot of money on entertaining executives, like I think the number's like three million dollars a year to come. Come, they come to Arizona, show us, we'll show you around the state, what we got for you. Hopefully, you'll make it a home. We don't spend that kind of money here.
Donal, something that the governor is working around is trying to eliminate income tax. He was like, he said, obviously, we need to pick up that revenue somewhere else, and he says it would probably need to go to property tax.
Mm-hmm.
So if they get their hands in the mix, how do you see that going?
Not well for us.
But I mean, how do you think, how do you think he has in mind that that will actually work?
Well, the property taxes will have to go up by the amount that he's losing in income tax revenue. There's a fixed amount of money you need to run a state for all your state agencies, the different civil functions we have, roads, firefighters, police, schools. You can't really reduce it beyond a certain point, so the money has to come from somewhere. So the state doesn't produce, governors don't produce the goods to sell. They are consumers of money. And so they have to have a stable source of tax revenue. In our state, we don't do much bonding or borrow the money compared to other states like California or Colorado or Washington. So we're operating on pure cash flow. And so there's not a lot of room left, in my opinion, to cut taxes to continue operating this state without a significant amount more of goods being produced and jobs here. But then we always hear about the roads and the homes we need. Latest estimate showed thirty-five thousand housing units in the state of Utah. A lot of people, a lot of houses, and.
But they're short.
But they're short. Meaning that people that, they don't, they can't, they're renting or when they want to, when they want to have own, they're in an apartment, when they want to have a single-family home, or maybe they're living with roommates or a family till they can afford their own place. The, the, the perspective of a housing development, um, agency is that, how advice will go down to the state if we had more homes to sell? Because we have that one more demand. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's the theory.
Isn't sales tax one of those other revenue sources that they?
Yes.
Talked about, I know it's incredibly regressive.
Yes, sales tax funds a good portion of the state government, the general fund, and it funds a lot of cities and counties as well. They get a percentage of state, sets a rate, and then cities and counties can tack on that.
Have there been other states that have done that?
Done, done what?
Uh, about the sales tax?
No, um, no, they'll, almost every city, almost every state has a sales tax. I mean, Indian reservations don't have that, but that's the exception. What they don't have, may, may not have is income tax.
Wyoming and Arizona or Nevada.
Montana, Wyoming, Nevada. Florida, Texas, they don't have income tax, they don't have income taxes, but they have higher property taxes. So I'll say, you know, you look at your taxing mix and you have to find your revenue somewhere and you can incentivize others versus prioritize, not prioritize some types, but in the end, you need a certain amount of revenue. And you can raise taxes through, I mean, you go to California, you're going to pay ten percent of your hotel stay in tourism taxes. But they feel, we have a lot of tourism, we'll generate more money off the backs of non-residents. So there's all kinds of different theories and ways of doing that, but at the end of the day, you need a certain amount of money to run a state. So I don't know, the answer to your question, I don't know that that's real feasible.
I guess maybe you are, that is, if they talked about that at the VA and super bowl.
Um, not really, because.
Well, that one bill.
Just thrown it out three years in a row now.
Well, it wasn't just him, the legislature came around. They did that road shows. Remember, we met over at, uh, Freeport City, Utah State Campus, and they were coming around and they were talking about doing the wave with it. And that was what Amendment G was, I think.
Yes.
Three, three years ago.
Well, Amendment G was going to, by adding, um, children and like part of the health programs to the, uh, income tax fund that, that would free up some more general revenue and they can do a tax cut, which they did. Um, but they haven't talked in detail, I'm aware of, of eliminating income tax and replacing that property, increase property taxes.
Wouldn't that have an inverse effect of trying to make houses more affordable?
Yes.
If the, if they're trying to make houses more affordable so people can get into houses, but if they put the income tax on the back of property tax.
The problem is, is that housing prices are not only based on supply and demand. Like a vehicles, like you've got more vehicles for sale and less buyers, prices come down. A lot of home prices are based on prior sales. What it sold for last week, or what a similar so, house sold for across the county. And so it, those prior sales were inching up, and so the new homes are moving along with those prior sales. It's not a strictly supply and demand balance.
I think at the end, the reason they want to do wave of income tax is because it helps proper, proper big business.
It, it helps attract businesses to our state.
Yeah.
So we're surrounded by Wyoming was zero, Nevada was zero, Arizona's two point three percent on the corporate income tax. So those tax rates are a lot lower than our four, six, five we have right now, almost double. So that makes it harder for them to be, to attract businesses. They feel like they'd have more businesses here if they had a lower tax rate.
I, I know Karen and I think Julie, and I don't recall who else was on the increment finance committee. There was a couple of times where we've had companies come to propose the Reader Ranch prior to it being inland port. And they would always, kind of under the weather, under the radar, talk about, well, they're, they're looking at a place in Arizona.
Yep.
And I think that, they always use that one because then they end up getting a better rate from them than they get from us. And I think that they always use that one because then they end up getting a better rate from them than they get from us. So far, they always went somewhere else. I don't know if they have rented that hill in there or not.
Um, the, the situation with Reader Ranch is there's not enough electrical power. Locky Mountain Power is declined to provide an off ramp for their power lines to supply power to this area. They say they don't have enough right now. And so Brigham City can't produce enough power to supply the commercial operations on that side of the freeway.
I've heard that Reader Ranch has gone for 275,000 acres.
275,000?
About the power. Maybe that's why we're not giving.
Somebody's betting on the future, aren't they? Wow.
Yeah. Um, so kind of talked about this, our, our property values have increased at an average of, this is over a 10-year period, 24% over 10-year period. There was one county that increased by 30%. That wasn't, it wasn't us, it was one rural county down south that had a huge increase in property valuations. So we can't capture that unless we decide to raise or change our, our taxing rates. We talked about how mix matters. So these are the counties with the highest percentage of real property. So Toowoomba's got a high percentage because they have a lot of federal land in their county. That we, they can't touch, it's beeland land or it's dugway or it's federal proven ground land. Obviously Summit and Losatch are similar type places where they have a lot of second homes, there are a lot of vacation homes. It's pretty mountainous. They don't have a lot of flat farmland. They have some, but not a lot compared to us or a Jew ab or something like that. So this all goes into your taxing strategy of how we receive revenue.
Bridge County would probably be close underneath those with their second homes.
Yes, yes, they would be.
Percentage wise.
Yes. So we kind of talked about this, new revenue and new growth. So when a home increases in value, we don't get more money for it. But when a piece of property changes in characteristic type, how they're using it, farmlands or residential, commercial. Or a vacant lot, they get the house put on it. The change in type, we get the, the new revenue from that change in type. So for example, I, I built a house a while back. My, I was, my lot was around $100,000, taxed full value in that lot. Put a house on that and now it's worth five or $600,000. And now that house, they get taxed on the whole change of that because I changed the type of use. So the land out here towards the freeway, we're going forward, building a new, a new building out there. Our Heritage Dodge is building a new building. It's a change in type. So we'll get 100% of the increase in valuation from that. If that was an existing building, we don't get anything extra until we play with the top, the tax rates.
For that year?
Um.
Not, never?
Uh, no, never. So in exist, so in existing home, existing commercial building, unless there's a change in it, like they expand it, they remodel it, they finish the basement. Unless they do that, you don't, they don't get additional revenue from that land, from that, that piece of property until they raise rates.
That's where we kind of, in the truth and taxation situation, we, we get accused of raising their taxes. And we didn't, the rate actually went down, but their value went up enough that it caused their taxes to go up.
Yeah.
That's always a little bit confusing to people because they still have to increase taxes.
Yeah. Historically, our tax, our, our praise value relations have gone up a lot more than we thought they would have. But we've also got about 2 and 1/2 to 3% of new growth each year. From new developments and changes in use types.
So have you been over the last couple of years and you've seen so much building?
Mm-hmm.
Still 2% or 3%.
Yeah.
Just 2% to 3%.
Yeah. But we get 100% of that. Well, revenue comes, is about half of that, but there's no, the rates are staying the same on those properties. So certified rates, so we have rate caps. And we can't go above the rate caps. And that's, that's calculated by the certified rate. So we take last year's revenue, divide it by this year's property values and it gives us a certified tax rate. And so the three ones that have a cap on that are the board, the voter levy, and the capital levy. And so this factors into that. We're nowhere near a cap, so we don't have anything to worry about there. But just for information point, it's just how we calculate our certified rates, which corresponds to the property tax caps. So we only need taxation, we need more revenue. If we have more revenue from growth, we don't have to hold a hearing. It's only when we're raising our overall rate on existing properties that we're taxing. Well, here's the deadline. And I, to change the rule this year, above this June 8th, just, we, by June 1st, we have to notify the county that we're going to raise rates. When I think of the budget, by how much, we'd say, we're going to hold a hearing, we'll raise rates, and here's our proposed hearing gate and time. This is important because the county is in charge of scheduling for all the entities in the county to make sure that there's not a hearing that overlaps another entity's hearing.
So everybody can go and voice their concerns each year.
Yes. We may not have as many entities, but think like a Salt Lake County, Weber County. You know, 30, 40 cities and then special districts and school districts and all that. They have a certain time when, window. We have to adopt the rate by September 1st. So we're just going to have three months to do this and every entity has the same amount of time as well. So the county is in charge of scheduling that and making sure we don't overlap. Has to be after 6:00 PM on a weekday.
People get off work.
That's right. And we cannot hold a regular hearing prior to the budget hearing or the tax hearing. We can do regular business afterwards, but we have to give everybody that shows up a chance to comment. New this year is required to offer a opportunity for virtual participation. Not just can you watch us on YouTube, but can you comment virtually?
July.
Yes. And we have to publicize, publicize all this, not in newspaper anymore. Because last year, the legislature got in trouble for not using newspaper publication properly. So they don't like being held accountable. So they eliminated that rule. So more, we have to adopt a proposed rate and a filing rate. So in June, we'll put out proposed budget for, and then hold hearings later on in July and August, and then there'll be a final rate.
Do you have to have two, two public hearings on it?
Uh, if you don't decide on the first one, yes, you have to have a second one. You could hear everybody's comments and questions, concerns, and make a decision at the end of that hearing. But if you don't, you must advertise when you plan on making a decision. So that's about our rate history. I kind of shared us last time we had a meeting here. Over time, on average, we, our rates have gone down by 4%. In seven years, they've gone down by 25% cumulatively. In 25, in seven, over seven years, we've had a 25% decrease in our rates. That averages out to be about 4% per year.
This, and this is the one that, that you count. I mean,
Yeah, the combined rate.
Neil has, and the board has the right to adjust those inside of that as long as that combined. You know, if he wants to go up the cap a little bit, we can do that. Or, or the board levy, or the voter levy, you can do that. But still has to, in that combined rate, has to stay, has to stay there.
So we don't control the basic school, the basic school levy that is set by now going to be the legislator and the tax commission and USBE and the board and the uh, who else is in there? I can't remember what other entities in there, but it's a conglomeration of several entities that set this basic school levy rate. The bond rate, that is set by a calculus, a mathematical calculation of what we owe on bonds each year, divided by the property tax for property valuation to come to the rate. Capital local levy, we and that, that rate cap is, I want to say 0.0025.
That is set by the state, but
The cap is.
The cap is.
Yes. So we're about half of that right now.
And we're at 00042?
Uh, no, 001.
We're on the line. Okay, yeah. So a little less than half, right?
Yeah. A voter local levy, that's set by voters. Ours passed, I think, in 1996 or 97. Our rate is 0006. So we got, we got some room there as well. We're at 000472. Charter school levy rate, have no control over that. State calculates how much we need to pass on the charter schools and they tell us how much to raise. And that gives us our combined rate. So the combined rate is what matters when, when we have to go with taxation or not.
Did you say the board rate it was?
Board local levy?
Uh, it's
Cap on that.
I think it's three. I think it's 0.003.
That sounds right.
So as valuations go up, these rates come down. So rising property tax, property valuations allows the district to generate more revenue because they have more room to raise.
And I know this has been said to you before, but I think it's important to realize those numbers seem really low. When you times it, times 7.2.
That's what was last year, yeah.
7.2 billion of value, valuation in the Foxhole County. You see those numbers do jump up pretty, pretty fast.
Yeah.
And moving it, you know, the total local levy, moving it from 0004 to moving it to 000
Six was the max.
Six would, would show quite a bit of money.
Yes.
I don't know, just off the top of my head, you'd have to do the math, but it's amazing how 0.00 times 7.2 billion makes a lot happen fast.
Yes, that's correct. Any questions here?
So 7.2 billion is total county or is that our?
County.
Oh, that's a county value.
Total county.
That's property valuation in the county. And here's, uh, this actually should be property tax collections. So this is what we collected each year. Actually, no, this is wrong. So the raise in property evaluate, property values is 34% increase. The values on top here of how much we collected each year. So last, this year we're collecting about $44 million. That represents about 1/3 of our operating budget. So when I say operating, that's teachers and classrooms. That's custodial, that's, um, that's RT staff, that's district administration. That's what our operating costs are. We have other funds. We have like the school fees, we have an auditorium, we have capital expenditures, we had debt service, those are other funds. But for our core operations, um, this is what we have received.
Oh, question. You say that we've increased 34% over seven years?
That's the property value history. So the top one, this slide's, I need to change the slide here. Those number costs top represent the collections, how much money we collected over time. You see, it's gone up a little bit, about $2 to $3,000, $3 million each year. Remember back, I said we had about 2.75% increase in new growth each year? So most of this is representing new growth. It's not representing a change in taxes.
But the big jump, when we got to the 40s, that was when commercial property got reassessed.
Yes, yes.
What happened in 2022? How did we survive that year?
Uh, a big increase in state. 2022, we had like a six.
SRA and all of that kind of stuff.
We had, we had that, but we had a 6% increase in WPU value. So state funds increased by 6% that year. That's how we No, vouchers were started this year.
But why would, do people get waivers for property taxes that year?
No, no. That was, that, mostly that was because the state raised WPU value by 6% because of the amount of increases in inflation going on.
Do you think you got a typo there? It went from 37 to 29. Should that have been 39?
Probably so.
Okay, that would, that would make sense.
I think that's because everyone
I apologize for that.
No, that's all right. That makes sense now.
So here's where we're at on, um, WPU value and tax increments. We're on the lower end of the district. So the state has a guaranteed rate on their state funding. And it takes into account local value raised versus WPU value. And so the more local money you raise, the less state support you get. And you can see, we're down here and towards the bottom of the, of the districts when it comes to the local value raised. What's that?
Is that sliding or?
I just added this just now. So we're, we're towards the bottom here. So relatively speaking, we can point that we don't have relatively high tax rates compared to the rest of the state. We are a net, we're being supported more by the more wealthy area than we support them. I want, I bring this slide up, talk about our general obligation debt. So it's going to retire in 2029. We have about $14.8 million left on it. And so we essentially will gain $3 million, $3 million, or have a tax cut of $3 million uh, in that year, in, in 2030. Because this will go away because we don't have an obligation anymore. So that tax rate for general obligation debt will go away. Questions?
That was our purpose for going from the bottom now because we were going to play, pay interest only for two or three years until that dropped off.
Yeah.
We can catch up.
Yep. Had the bond passed, that would have netted out. Instead of paying 15, 16 million a year, we would have paid like 12 million a year going forward.
Neil, does the state, I don't know how to say this, but if the state like Nevada has gambling or if state has the lottery and all, does that play into this?
It does.
So how is that an advantage to, to those states?
Most states, those mechanisms go 100% toward education.
So that's why they don't have income tax?
Wyoming has the mineral tax of all that oil.
Yep.
Education, boom or bust?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
So a lot of states, California, Arizona, the lottery, 100% of the proceeds goes into education.
I don't know, what does Montana have? Just expensive branches that all the hickwigs buy now? Is that?
They have a lot of energy up there in Montana.
Oh, I guess they do the other way.
And they have high property taxes.
Yeah. It's because, that's because it's Yellowstone. It's all Yellowstone's fault. And I'm not talking, I'm talking serious. Yeah. I don't know all the very water. I think so. You know, when education I can't, went to building sites. I know my homeschool district, build a building, they said a good portion of the kid from that particular fund. So I don't know how that works out. Well, any other questions for Neil on that?
So when do, you said that we get the money from the property tax usually in December?
November 30th is the state deadline to pay property taxes. So our first, we get property tax revenue throughout the year, but our, our biggest chunk comes in December and January. Because they're not considered delinquent or past due until January 1st. So a lot of, uh, escrow companies, mortgage companies will submit a check by November 30th or if, or if you're paying personally in the month of December. And because there's no, there's no penalty for paying late up until January 1.
They keep the money in their coffers as long as they can.
Yep. It's common for the property developers to do that because it's a cheap loan.
So then the, the bill that would have put that money in the state's bank, the governor vetoed, right?
Yes.
So you don't need to worry about that this year?
Unless they decide to override his veto.
Yeah, they can still do that in special session.
They could do that in a special session.
Talk about?
I have not heard.
I had not heard that, but they keep those things pretty close to their best.
So didn't they, I heard that they did that kind of in retaliation of being able to go last year to vote.
Well,
and next year they're planning to go again for that vote.
I, I would think so.
The governor vetoed it because the state was going to be the collector of it, but the state doesn't assess it. And there's a constitutionality issue. In the state constitution, it basically says the state doesn't assess, cannot collect something they don't assess. Because the county has the assessing power, they theorize that the state does not have the right to Because the county has the assessing power, they theorize that the state does not have the right to collect it. And that's why the governor vetoed it, because of the constitutionality of it.
The state auditor asked to repeal it as well, at least the schools. But that would, that would almost seem that they wouldn't come back.
Well, unless they change that law.
Yes.
That's, so next year we might see that law changed.
But like in, in special session, it doesn't look like they do.
I.
It won't be the first time the legislator has done something that gets struck down by courts. So they, they could if they wanted to, doesn't mean it's the right thing to do, but that's in the prerogative.
It was the right thing to do, but which, which you have to do.
So, I was just going to say, so are we getting higher interest rates now on money?
Yes, yes. We're getting 4.7% on money this year.
So that first month that we give money in, that we get 4.7% and then we use it throughout the year.
Yeah.
What was it before?
It's been down as low as 0.6%.
0.6 in the hour.
Yeah.
You thought it had money on.
If you.
Millions we have in, in that PTIF?
It goes up and down. I want to say right now, total liquid, I'll say liquid, total investments are probably right around 12, 15 million dollars. We have a portion of other investments that are actually in some, um, government, in, in bonds that pay us interest as well, about the same percentage. Um, but combined, we have about $20 million investment accounts, whether it's PTIF or with the, with Zions Bank.
Really make a pretty good check of money there.
We are, we are, but it's one-time money. It's not guaranteed, can change, so we don't want to count on that money for ongoing operations each year.
Do we try to use it every year? Like is that money that you, you deserve?
No, we, so we add money to our rainy day or savings account, if you will, each year. Last year we added $5 million. So it's hard to say, is that money we used or didn't use? Well, it was in the same pot of operations. So if you, of the $5 million, $1 million that could have been interest money.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like, thank you, Neil. I thought it was a great presentation. I hope that's, you know, something we could probably watch several times and learn more about and then, you know, present this in a public meeting someday so people understood just, you know, a little bit better what,
Yeah.
what all this is about when we talk about truth and taxation and all of that, so. We don't have time to talk about anything else, so go out and shake hands and say, hi, this is going to be a full house.